Mr. President, there she is.
Please stand for the President's invocation by Councilmember Chris Jerem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a moment to ask for prayers for those affected by the law officer-involved shooting yesterday in our city, whether it be on the law enforcement side, whether the people in the store, employees, or the families of anyone involved, including the person who was shot. We just ask prayers of healing and continued dedication, our city, to doing the things that we can do to help address the violence in our community. Amen.
City Clerk certifies publication on the day record on February 20th, notice for a pre-council and regular city council meeting in February 24, 2015. A current copy of the meeting's act is posted in white binder on the East Wall of the State Chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices.
Zoning ordinance on final ring planning board attachments, item five through seven or one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 100 of I-680 on Irvington Road from Development Reserve District to General Industrial District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Six is resolution to platent titled Seaton Industrial Park, Lot 2 is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And seven is subdivision agreement is hereby approved, and we have a request to lay this over two weeks and continue the public hearing.
Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's laid over two weeks. Item number eight, ordinance to rezone property located at 8704 Boyd Street from Development Reserve District to R2 Single Family Residential District, low-density. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing number eight is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Eight is passed, seven to zero. Resolution is ready, permanent plats, plats subdivision agreements, nine through 11 or one case. Nine is resolution, the permanent plats entitled North Peak Acres, located southwest of Mormon Bridge Road and Sheffield Street. Loan attached conditions is accepted in preparation, final plat is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Ten is resolution to platent titled North Peak Acres is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eleven is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items nine, ten, and eleven are today. Proponents, please. Any opponents?
I live on the south boundary of this property. Name, Brian Brink. Address is 7602 Mormon Bridge Road. And I'm on the south boundary of this property, and I have not received any information as to, but this says other than the notice of a public hearing. And this has an attachment. It says to see attached, and there is nothing attached here.
Okay.
Am I entitled to know what it is?
Of course. And are, so are you an opponent today, just for clarification of the testimony?
Pardon me?
Are you an opponent today, then? Are you testifying neutral or?
I'm an opponent right now because I don't know what it is.
Okay.
If I am informed, then I may be an opponent for it.
Okay. Mr. Fanslaw, do you want to?
Sure. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. It's a three-lot subdivision. There are three existing homes that encompass the property, the project. It's basically some lot line adjustments, and they're creating some legal lots of record. There's no new improvements. It was in front of Planning Board, it was approved by Planning Board in September. You should have been notified of that meeting. If you weren't, I guess I apologize. I'm not sure why, and we can check our records, but that's, Councilman, that's basically what it is, so.
So at this point, there's nothing proposed to be developed. It's primary plat for future development, correct?
Yes, minor plat, preliminary and final. Again, there's three existing property owners up there. They're readjusting some lot lines.
Okay.
And I have a concern with my plat showing an existing fence line on my property, and I want to make sure that that's not included in the reboundary.
Okay. You might suggest get together with Mr. Fanslaw, maybe after the meeting, or on the side here in a minute?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Motion, a second. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Jerem, or Mr. President?
Yes.
Fourteen is adopted, seven to zero. Or not fourteen, nine through 11 are adopted, seven zeros. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, agenda item number 12 through 13 shall be laid over two weeks. Special use permit, item number 14. Resolution, the special use permit application submitted by Blake Simmers Properties for a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing in a community commercial district located at 20513 Nicholas Circle is hereby approved. A Planning Board, Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing number 14 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, agenda item number 15 shall be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Liquor, item number 16, Soulful Lounge, 3825 North 30th Street. Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing number 16 is today. Are there any proponents?
Tanisha Horton, 3825 North 30th Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tanisha, can you come back to the mic for a minute? This is the old spalding that you're taking over, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any plans for renovation, or are you going to expand anything that, what do you plan to do there?
There are no plans for any expansion.
Okay.
In terms of renovations, of course, just removal of the old carpet, replacing that, throwing paint on the wall, things of that nature, but nothing major.
Okay.
But in reference to it being the old spalding, I'm not actually taking over the old spalding. This is a new.
Your new licensee?
A new licensing, a new business under a new name. It has nothing to do with the old spalding.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
Join the neighborhood association.
I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sixteen is adopted, seven to zero. Item number 17 is Himalayas Restaurant, 1010 Howard Street. Class C liquor license, new application, old location is an upgrade.
Public hearing number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Noah Rinchin, and corporation is the GNT Food of Nebraska and DBA Himalayas. So specialized Indian and Buddhist cuisine.
And your address, just for the record?
1010 Howard Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I just have a question for you. The existing, or the prior business was a class I license for on-sale only, and you've asked for a C, which would allow off-sale. What is the purpose of the C?
Because people can finish their wine, they want to take home, so that's why we have, if they want to do the takeout, they want to bottle their wine, we do the takeout.
So you're going to limit your C to restaurant customers who want to recork the wine bottle?
Right.
You agree you're not going to have a package store there?
No, it's not a package store. It's just a restaurant. Thank you.
Motion approved. Motion, a second. Roll call.
Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Gurnat, Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Seventeen is adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 18, La Calera, 6617 Sunshine Drive. Package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Daniela Salcedo. It's for a liquor license. Sorry, I'm Christina Williamson. I'm one of the interpreters. I work for the Planning Department.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Are there any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gurnat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are you folks aware that there has been some opposition that has been sent to us, both verbally and in written form, about the application? You're not aware?
They're not aware.
Okay. Well, there has been. It's not a lot, but there's enough that it's been consistent about the same concerns. So I'm going to have some questions in regards to those concerns, and I'd like the applicant to reply, if that would be, is that all right? Great. What is going to be the applicant's role? Because I've noticed that the applicant was applying, but there was a manager that was doing most of the talking during the application process. What's the applicant's role, other than being that applied for it and is listed as the owner?
She says she's the only one taking care of any of the applications process.
Is there a manager that is going to be doing the day-to-day process?
She says, for now, for beginning, Mrs. Danielle is going to be the one in charge of the day-to-day operations. She said then later on, once it gets going, she'd be hiring somebody else.
Just indulge me here a bit. Noticed another name on here.
Okay. Do you have maybe a name of a gentleman, first name of Jose, which was her boyfriend that has been helping her with some of the process?
Yes.
Okay, that's this gentleman.
Okay. What is your, just for the record, would you put your name and address onto the record, sir? I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
What address?
Do you need like his home address or his residency?
That'd be fine.
Oh, it's 3111 Q Street. It's 3111 Q Street.
Okay. What will be your role, if any, in regards to the operation?
My name is Jose Barajas.
And what would be your role in the operation of this business?
He will be helping her, for example, on the days that she's not available to be at the store that day or whatnot. He'd be helping her, helping her maybe with some of the paperwork, but not a full role, just kind of a part-time as she needs it.
The neighbors had some concerns. It's nothing that we haven't, as a council, heard before. One of them being the number of liquor licenses that surround this particular site. Of course, you're in a small strip mall now, and the owner of that particular piece of property, they have a restaurant bar at the opposite end of where you're going to be located. And then there are a spattering of licenses that surround this particular location that she is applying for. What are her plans for trash cleanup in the area around the site and her security plan?
The owner of the strip mall is in charge of the trash and the cleanup. Are you talking outsider as well as inside the store?
I like when somebody walks out of the place and they may drop some trash, or how is she going to participate in keeping the area looking nice so neighbors don't get a bad impression of her business?
She, if it's something of your example, she would take care of. She has another type of business, that she has a cleaning crew that she hires for, so that same cleaning crew, on the days that the strip mall wouldn't, you know, have to handle it, she'd make sure they get handled. About two to three days a week. Her other business, just for information, is a hair beauty salon.
And does she participate in that business on a full-time basis, day-to-day?
She says there it's just by appointment only, when she's there most of the time. She's there between six to seven hours or so a day, depending on the appointments.
And she's applied for this particular site for an applicant, or a license to operate a package store at 6617 Sunshine Drive. I'm a little bit confused if she's going to be operating this full-time and doing that. You know, I've been accused of being two places at once myself, okay? And it's, I try to say, yeah, I can do that.
They're saying that's where Mr. Jose is going to come in with part of that part-time help with it. If she, like you said, she can't be at two places at once, so if she has an appointment at the hair salon and she can't be at the Sunshine Drive address, then Mr. Jose will be there.
So Jose is actually going to play a role on a day-to-day basis from the get-go? Is that correct?
She said her mother will also be helping on the day-to-day until she gets it going, and she could, you know, get a schedule established between the hair salon and this She says, depending on how the business goes, at this address versus her hair salon, she might be spending more time at the Sunshine Drive than the other place.
And if I'm reading the application correctly, it's a one-year lease presently? Does she understand that, when I mentioned earlier, neighbors are going to be watching that, and hopefully, you know, they may patronize her business. We're certainly not in the business of up here, you know, putting people out of business, but there are some times that business themselves are their own worst enemy. And I'm not seeing that in this case, don't get me wrong, but with liquor licenses surrounding this particular one, neighbors have legitimate concerns about trash, security, and does she plan on having some type of security plan there?
Said there'll be alarm installed with cameras inside and outside of the store.
Thank you. Just stay close. He'll need to get to the microphone.
Tom Mungard, Deputy City Attorney.
In a capsulated version, the three things that, what the Liquor Control Commission looks for, one being the character of the operator, the actual operation, and could you just kind of capsulate those three areas? I just want those that are watching and the record to reflect. I know how the council's going to vote, but I just want to make sure that it's crystal clear to everyone.
You've mentioned two different things, and so I'll try to put them together. When the Liquor Control Commission looks at an application, they're supposed to look to see whether the applicant is fit, willing, and able to properly provide the service. That goes to their personal qualifications. They also look to the location, whether that location is going to have an adverse impact on neighbors. They also look to the type of business that's going to be conducted there, and they'll look to see whether that type of business is consistent with the sale of alcohol in the public interest. For example, if it's a business that largely attracts children, that wouldn't be compatible with the sale of alcohol, so the type of business comes into it. Those are the three kind of major things that they look at. Going back to the, whether the applicant is fit, willing, and able to properly provide the service, there are certain types of people that are disqualified as a matter of law. One would be a person who is not of what the statute says, good character and reputation in the community. That's basically whether they have, what the case law has said, is honesty of purpose. You can commit, you can depend on them being able to do or doing what they say they're going to do. If you can't depend on them, they don't have good character and reputation in the community. Those are the kinds of factors that are all looked at, and then when you get kind of down to the bottom line, you put all those things together, and the Liquor Control Commission decides whether the license should be granted or not. And, you know, basically, those are the same things that you're supposed to be looking at when you're making your recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm going to back up. Would you be so kind to capsulate what Mr. Mungard said? I saw you were taking notes.
I was.
And if you would just like to go on the record to tell her what he said?
For example, if there are businesses that are selling alcohol, it would not be a good impact on that location. And number three is the type of business, as they say, if the owner of the business has what it signifies, it would be a good character, and it would be equal, not just in terms of personal, but it has had some problems before, it has had some other businesses that have had problems, that have failed. For example, so those are the three things that not only the city, but the town has to look at for the license.
She's not, or she doesn't have any questions in regards to what was said? She fully understands that?
She said she understood it.
Good. That's good to hear. It's been my practice for as long as I've been here to give an applicant a chance, and I'm willing to do that in this case, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, a second. Mr. Jerem. One of the things that we normally have with liquor license applications, when you have someone that's married, is that we have background information on the spouse. In this case, we don't have that ability, given the lack of marriage between the applicant and Jose. So given the applicant's testimony that Jose is going to have a prominent role in this operation, I'd like to know a little bit more about Jose.
Okay. Did you have some questions, or did you?
I was just waiting for you to catch up.
Oh, yep.
Mr. Mungard, would you come up for just a second?
Tom Mungard, Deputy City Attorney.
When someone fills out a liquor license application, there's some questions on background, and then the person's information, and there's a background check done by both the city and the state patrols, is that correct?
Correct.
And part of what the purpose of that is, is to see if there's any automatically disqualifying criminal citations or convictions, and then the other one is just general background, correct?
Well, the city primarily looks at general criminal history for those purposes. The state looks a little bit further. They look into the financial abilities and see if there's any hidden financing, stuff like that, yeah.
So what are the automatically disqualifying offenses that would, which would preclude someone from applying, that who's applying for a license to get one? Is there felony and what else?
Well, on the criminal history, it would be any felony or any, or any felony or certain class-one misdemeanors. Anything below that, it's not an automatic disqualification, it's just evidence of character and reputation.
Thank you. Jose, would you come up? Your name is Jose Barajas?
Si.
Do you have, in your background, either conviction for a felony or a crime, which the punishment was a year in jail? Okay. Any other criminal background that you have involved with, all clean, on the up and up? Okay. In terms of the, your involvement with the business, I get the sense that your role is going to be the predominant day-to-day person, at least at the start, because your girlfriend is running her hair salon, and until she can figure out what's going on there, you'll be running the show.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. What he's saying is that when she has an appointment at her hair salon business, that's when he would go to the. It's liquor store? And attend the.
And attend the business for that timeframe. She says her only appointments for the hair salon are mornings, so she, in the afternoon, she wouldn't have any, so she'd be there. So, he'd be there a couple of hours a day, depending on her appointments at the hair salon. Okay.
Me hicieron que yo tomara las clases, ya después yo quería contestar a la persona, yo tenía que entrenarla para que ellos pudieran trabajar.
Tomara las clases?
Apenas las voy a tomar.
She says she was also under the understanding that if she took certain classes that are required for, I don't know if it's para la licencia?
Yeah, responsible beverage course. I'm familiar with those, and I understand that. But I think, and I understand the answer, but to keep this moving, I just, I think Mr. Mungard wanted to say something.
Okay. I'll jump in and point out that a corporation or a limited license corporation such as this has to appoint a manager. Now, that manager has to be personally qualified and go through the process. You can, if you wish, you certainly have the authority to condition your approval upon the appointment of this fellow as the manager and force him to go through the review process that we would with managers. You can make that a condition of your approval, if you wish.
Is there a manager app on file on this buster?
I believe so. I believe she's the manager.
So, when she filed that application because he was going to be helping, I think actually Mr. Jose's name is on the application as manager.
Bueno, pero si quiero contar mi mamá también, puedo ir sola. Lo que, so, lo que están diciendo es que él como gente a la mejor va a tener que hacer los chequeos igual que usted, porque va a ser diferente la tienda. Se diría que a la mejor es una mamá, pero más que no todos.
Here is the manager.
Pero si tiene, yo la persona.
She's the manager.
Pero no sería que es no.
Buster Round City Clerk, she is listed as a manager, and she, in her application, she is listed as a manager.
No pusieron, me hicieron aquí.
So, in the application that she has filed, she has disclosed that Jose is a source of funding for this business venture.
Jose, tú vas a poner dinero monetario para el negocio?
No, ahorita no.
Pusiste, se hace una aplicación?
Me prestó cuando compramos, compramos unos, que hubiera despistado todavía.
Para negocio.
Pero todavía no hemos hecho.
Pero eso es lo único que va a hacer. What she's saying is he lent her money for some refrigerators for the liquor store, but that's the only monetary involvement he is going to have with the business.
Pero son de otro dueño, es de otra persona.
And they were sold owner to owner, so it's not from a store. They're going to purchase them from another individual.
The questions I have is just, I guess maybe, I'm suspicious of the arrangement that someone who has a hair salon is going to open up this type of liquor operation, that someone is going to lend money on that but not have an interest in the business. And it's just a concern as to why wouldn't he be disclosed as some sort of investor or member or shareholder, depending on the type of corporate arrangement it is in the operation.
Va a ser parte, dueño del negocio en algún tipo, o solamente como trabajador?
Ayuda, como trabajador.
Okay. She's saying that the only investment part are those refrigerators that are going to be purchased, other than that, he's not going to have a monetary interest in that business.
Dile que ella también su salón puede estar abierto sin que ella esté ahí, no tiene trabajadoras.
She says in her hair salon, if it's a concern, she can be at the liquor store full-time because she does have workers at the beauty salon that, for the day that she can't make it or if she goes out of town, are in charge of the beauty salon.
Condesa, el comentario, yo soy de que no se dedique.
And I just have one last question for her. By way of background, when I'm not here, I also have a law, I'm a lawyer, and our law firm handles liquor licenses. And it's not uncommon over the 24 or so years I've been practicing law to see people come in like you who have a business but have a boyfriend, and then because of a very generous quality and attribute of the person wants to help their boyfriend out with a business venture. Is that anything what you're thinking about here, or is this your business for you, and really, other than some money for some refrigerators, he, this is not for his benefit?
Lo que él dice es aparte de estar aquí en el Cid, su trabajo total es ser un abogado. Su oficina de ellos también mantiene muchas de las licencias para estos casos. Dice, lo que ha visto durante los años que está trabajando es que estas, que las personas abren, por ejemplo, un segundo negocio para ayudar a sus parejas, ya sea monetariamente por cualquier otra razón. So, quería saber si ese es el caso, o si este negocio va a ser 100% totalmente solamente tuyo, y que el único interés de Jose es el dinero que prestó para los refrigeradores.
No, es para mí, para mis hijos, no es para él.
She says the business and whatever profits that come from it are going to be for her and her children.
All right. And just so she understands a little more, is there are sometimes people who have come before this council and then who I've met over the past 20-plus years, who have in their own background information that they fear, or fear, or are concerned that if it came to light through this process, that they would not themselves be granted a liquor license. Is there anything like that going on? That would be my final question to address what I'm.
Su última pregunta es quiere saber si la razón, ya sea tuya de Jose, que a lo mejor no pusieron a Jose, es porque si hay algo detrás de la aplicación o de personalmente, que a lo mejor no quieren que salga la luz durante el proceso.
Pues yo lo único que yo, porque soy también, aparte que es mío, porque yo soy ciudadana, pero de que tenga algo lo pueden checar, no transformar.
She says that's not her fear.
Okay. Well, then I'm, then you've addressed my concerns, and I want to give you the same opportunity that Councilmember Gernat said, and wish you luck, but let you know that if any of this sort of information comes to light or to the surface, that I will be the first person to bring you back here to explain why your license shouldn't be removed.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna take this leap of trust today and give you the opportunity and support that opportunity, and hope that there isn't anything else going on. It's just this, my cynicism is from experience, and I'm sorry that if it causes you all these questions, but it's just from experience, that this, these things happen from time to time, and unfortunately, because of those experiences, you get the questions.
Lo que dice es de su cinismo, las preguntas no viene porque piensa que personalmente hay algo, sino porque hay los casos, en estos casos, que luego después los tienen que volver a traer una cita porque salió algo que no salió hoy a la luz, y que ellos van a ser los primeros en querer revocar entonces la licencia porque los problemas no se hablaron hoy.
Sí, yo entiendo que es un negocio muy delicado, pero voy a tratar de llevarlo como debe de ser, igual como llevó el otro, tengo que.
También pues que de, que claro que, como él dijo, si hay algo que piensa, que hay algo
Jose puede checar.
Que si él desea, puedo checar un plan, o, y si voy a ayudar como trabajador a ella.
Okay. She's saying she understands that the business that she's venturing is a delicate business, and that she has no other plans but to take it in the same manner as she takes her other business. And Mr. Jose's saying if it's the council's wish to undergo any background of any type, he does not have an issue with doing so.
Right. Thank you.
Va a ser un trabajador, puede ayudar.
Yeah, and you just wanted to reiterate, he's not gonna have any part in the business other than helping and being a part-time worker, if you consider it that way.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gernat.
Just one last thing, make sure that she understands that how the vote comes out today is a recommendation to the Liquor Control Commission, that they have the final say. Does she fully understand that?
Dice que lo que están también que entiende es el voto que salga hoy de este cuarto es para la recomendación para el estado de la licencia. Lo que el estado decida después no tiene nada que ver con el voto de hoy.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Si todavía sigue otro paso, hay otro paso.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second?
Yes. She understands.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Item number 19 was held on February 10th.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
19 has passed, seven to zero.
Public carries on agenda items number 20 through 30 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See, non-public carries are closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take the opportunity, just very quickly, because in these resolutions, a couple of them address what we have been concerned about as a council for a while is, in terms of working with the school district on truancy. And I know Mr. Warren is here, our former police chief, and I know you run one of the larger efforts with the Urban League, and just wanted to give the council just very briefly, if you could, some statistic, I mean, you gave me some stats about how well it's going, but I think I wanted you to share that with some of the council members.
Sure. Thank you. Thomas Warren, Urban League of Nebraska, 3040 Lake Street, Mr. President, members of the City Council. We certainly appreciate your consideration of continued support for the truancy reduction program on behalf of the Urban League and my colleagues, Latino Center of the Midlands, represented by Melissa Mayo in Carolina, Queseda, Mr. Greg Emo at the D2 Center. At the Urban League, we have a youth attendance navigator at Northwest High School, at Benson High School, as well as at Monroe Middle School, and then South has, I'm sorry, Latino Center has South High School. We serve roughly 180 students at our three schools. South High has 58 students in their program, and so we have a, make a significant impact on the student population. The purpose of the program is to engage those students who have been experiencing chronic absenteeism, amongst other challenges, and of course, when they're out of school, they're at risk to engage in other antisocial behavior. We have shown, not only have, we made a difference with the case management of these students. They've improved academically. We've shown improvements in graduation rates, and of course, it's directly correlated with improved school attendance. I can speak specifically for our students at both Benson and Northwest. Our seniors who participated in the program had 100% graduation, and these are students who had in the past missed anywhere between 10 to 15 days of school. I would also add that the funds being provided by the City of Omaha only represent a portion, roughly 50%, of the funds that it takes to administer the program. The partner agencies contribute significantly, approximately 50% of the balance for staff salaries and benefits. And I'm willing to entertain any questions you may have.
I just wanted you to give a brief, I mean, to give the kind of overview that you did, because I wanted the council members to know that, you know, this is money well spent on an effort with our Community Development Block grant dollars to really make a dent in graduation rates and get more people in the classroom and less people on the street. So, thank you, I appreciate that, and I make a motion to approve, Mr. President. Thank you.
Second, and before you leave, Mr. Warren, a question for you too, and I think we have a couple other lights as well. So, I agree that truancy program's been a wise investment by the city for a period of years, and I was reviewing all the paperwork this morning before the meeting with the statistics you described and the success rates you had, which I think are tremendous with the youth attendance navigators. And you're in three, three schools in my district, which I very much appreciate, Northwest, Benson, and Monroe. You're also now in, some of the group and contractors are in MacMillan and Norris Middle Schools now too, right?
Well, they were in the past, a couple of the partner agencies, the YMCA, Completely Kids were administering programs in 13, 14 school year. They discontinued their programs. However, we have expanded in the North High School with an alternative source of funding, and we do have an application for future grant funds to expand into both MacMillan as well as Nathan Hill Middle Schools, and I believe the Latino Center has also expanded their programs.
Okay. So, we're currently in five schools, but we're looking to be in seven?
Correct.
Great. And I'd also add, there's another agenda item that it's a similar nature to this, that also deserves mention, which is the work inside the schools with dental treatment. Some very impressive numbers along those lines. They have served about 1,000 kids this year with preventative services, dental services, and that's in 13 different elementary schools, which I think's very helpful to the same situation we're describing. So, thanks for your work, and thanks to Latino, the Latino Center, and also D2, and I think Dwyer also is involved in this, in some of these services too, right?
They have been in the past.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Chief, I also want to thank you for the work that you and the others have done, and I was just wondering, are there any resources and/or time left over to impact the parents? Is that outside of your scope, or do you have a time or a moment where you touch the parents also?
The parental involvement and family engagement are critical components of the program at the Urban League as well as at the Latino Center. We're blessed enough, we can offer a comprehensive suite of services to support the entire family, including the parents. And so, in addition to making sure that they're involved in the academic activities of that student, we can also provide some support, job training, job placement, things of that nature.
I asked the question because when I was an assistant principal at Blackbird, which then it was called ISC Number Two, we were shocked to find out that some of our kids were the parents, and the parents were the kids, and that, so, in a lot of cases, our, the kids were suffering because the parenting was kind of, you know, lacking, so, but I'm sure you've seen that in both of the professions, many of the professions that you've been in, I'm sure you've seen that phenomenon.
Sure, and that's really the purpose of the program. We realize that truancy is a symptom, and it's those underlying issues that may cause a student to miss school, and so our efforts are in, attempting to address those root causes, and the fact that that student has a relationship with a caring adult, that has made a big difference in providing that surrogate support to that student that may be lacking in the household at times.
Again, thank you for the work to all four organizations and telling, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't pass up the opportunity to get a plug-in for South Omaha. The boundaries of the City of Omaha do not stop at Cummings Street. I keep telling people that.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Mayo. I'm the program director at Latino Center of the Midlands. And I wanted to provide a couple updates on what's going on in the Pathways to Success Program. That is the program that we house our student advocates, much like the youth attendance navigators. The funding would support our student advocate at South High School. We also do serve students at Bryan High School as well, and have expanded into Bellevue Public Schools just this past school year. As Tom said, you know, we are a support network for students who are often overlooked. These are the students that could potentially fall through the cracks if these interventions did not happen. So, we're proud to say that we serve 53 students at South High School. We could probably have four student advocates at South High School if we had the funds to do so. There are a lot of kids that are struggling academically, they're struggling because of their attendance. But we're proud to say that 94% of our students currently in the school year are on track to reduce their absenteeism rates from, over the previous school year. We have a 2.8 GPA for the students that are currently in our program. 77% have a 2.0 GPA or higher, and 45% of those have a 3.0 GPA or higher. We serve students over the course of a school year, however, we know that some of these issues have stemmed long before they came to us, and so we won't give up on them after a school year. We'll serve them multiple school years until that stability is in place. We have 19 seniors who are on track to graduate this year from South High School. And one of the neat things that we've seen, because of our engagement with our students and parents, has an increase in our parental engagement at our monthly family activities, which is something, we can do so much with the students, but I think the support that we provide to our families is just as important and has as much of an impact as it does in our students. So, thank you for your support.
Population of South High, I believe, is the largest in OPS at 2,500 right now.
Right. They're busting at the seams.
Yeah, you could probably use six.
Mm-hmm. No doubt about it.
It's just surpassed Central High School, it's the largest high school in the state, right? So, perfect segue.
Right. Greg Emo, Executive Director, D2 Center, 1941 South 42nd Street.
Let's just surpass Central High School, it's the largest high school in the state, right? So, perfect segue.
Greg Emo, Executive Director, D two Center, nineteen forty-one, South Forty-second Street. I just wanted to add that the youth navigators at the D two Center actually have youth that we're working with in all seven of the OPS high schools, as well as all of the alternative programs, and our primary outcome is to see our youth graduate from high school. And so, over the past three and a half years, we've had a little over three hundred students active in our program. We've had sixty-eight graduate, we still have a hundred and sixty-five that are active in our program, so, we also have a goal of seeing them go to the next step after graduation, and so, we're proud of the fact that we offer a career service where our goal is to hook up our youth after they graduate, you know, whether it's Metro Community College, or whatever training program, four-year college, that's also a goal, and something leading toward a career, because after all, it's about our youth in this community, our disconnected, high-risk youth. We want them to be productive, hard-working, tax-paying citizens, rather than those that were feeding tax dollars and to take care of them. So, that's definitely a goal we have at the D two Center, and I thank you very much for your support.
Thanks, Greg.
I would just, I'd like to echo that as loud as I can from the highest mountaintop. I gotta tell you, we constantly use that term of these kids falling through the cracks. Well, you're the professional tubes of caulk that are closing that, and this is probably one of the best investments that the city can be involved in, and I know as long as I'm in this chair, we're talking about young people getting an education and trying to stop that cycle of mistakes and poor choices, and then getting into adult life, and that's all that they know. And we need to continue this effort and get them on that, on that right path, and I think pathways to success, whatever label that you put on it, we have to continue our efforts and continue increasing that agreement of the program. Thank you all for what you do.
And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question, and any of the three you could answer. I know it's a state level, we, at one time, we tried to make truancy an issue, and there was so much pushback that we really, a number of changes were made to some of the truancy laws that there's passed, that legislature had passed, and I kept hearing that so many of these kids ended up in court because of their truancy. Is that, is that what you found in the students you've dealt with? Did they, first of all, hit the courts? Because that's one of the pushbacks, you're saying, too many of the kids would go to court because they missed so many days of school, and I'm just curious.
I can offer a perspective from the Urban League and Thomas Warren, thirty forty, Lake Street. LB eight hundred, the legislation you're referring to, by statute, would require a student to be referred to the Douglas County Attorney's Office if they missed in excess of twenty days of school. Our efforts are to be much more proactive, to keep that kid from reaching that twenty-day threshold so that they can stay out of the juvenile justice system. I could tell you that statistically, there has been a reduction in the number of kids not only being referred, but also being confined in the Douglas County Youth Center. Not only were the kids missing school, they were engaging in risky behavior, delinquent behavior, criminal behavior, but as a result of these efforts, not only are they in school, they're being productive, they're achieving academically and graduating, so I see the positive effects of these programs.
And I would agree that the, you know, actually, now that the law's changed, the numbers being referred to the county attorney are going down, and I know with a lot of the youth, they try to send them to diversion first, to keep them out of the court. So, I think overall, there has been a reduction in the number of youth that are being referred to the county attorney, but for us, about thirty-five percent of the youth that we work with at the D two Center either are or have been on probation, and generally, the majority of those has been for truancy. However, a lot of the youth we're working with are over eighteen, so that is no longer a factor.
For those, I'm just curious about this, for those who would be, would get in trouble because of the truancy, your program, you're saying is keeping those kids from hitting the courts? Is that what I'm to understand?
That's the objective, is to keep them not only from reaching that twenty-day threshold where they would be referred to the county attorney's office, but to engage them in pro-social activities, because we know that not only are kids not in school, they're generally engaged in some type of risky behavior, so it is a direct correlation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem.
To the person in this room who raised a concern as to social programs, who shall remain anonymous, but did so earlier today, I must say that when I heard you say that we are focusing on producing a person who is a taxpayer, not a consumer of tax dollars, I hope that person was listening, because we're spending on the front end a relatively modest sum of money to prevent police contacts, court system contacts, incarceration, hospital visits, in any number of social ailments that we repeatedly talk about here, and that our city confronts. It's addressing workforce development among youth and those needs, and this is, to me, something that's very laudable and very, very wise expenditure of city resources to do that. And coming down the pipeline, we're going to be having a conversation, as we've alluded to in the past, about some things that we can be doing in other areas with adult populations to address these workforce developments, so that we can have people going from consumers of resources and living in areas of high risk in our cities to violence and other things, to making livable wage, good career placements available to them through workforce development. So, I applaud what you, your organizations are doing, and if it were me, and I were the mayor, I would say come back with the more people in the schools to get more youth served, but I recognize there's balance, and, but this is money well spent, and I think it's money that the community overwhelmingly supports too, and so I'm glad that you're having the success that you are in this.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Items twenty through thirty, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty through thirty are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you all for being here.
Resolution. Item number thirty-one, resolution attached, Omaha Council Bluffs Consortium Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Program Consolidate Plan 2015 Action Plan is hereby approved. A is an amendment to the plan.
Public carrying on number thirty-one is today. Are there any proponents? See, none any opponents. Public carions closed.
Motion approved.
I got an amendment.
Oh, the amendment.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second on the amendment. I have one comment, too, that I made this morning, but I, and I have made in previous years, but I just want to make the observation again today before we vote, and I support this today, as well as the amendment, but because there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with what we're doing here, and in fact, I think all these programs are worthwhile and merit support, but from time to time, I've observed that in our CDBG program, it seems to me sometimes we're spreading the money very thinly across a number of different items, when perhaps it might be more worthwhile to focus on a few things and do them very well, like we have in the past, when we talked about some economic development projects funded through the CDBG program in South Twenty-fourth Street or North Twenty-fourth Street, in a big way, to make a big difference, rather than small differences in many places. So, an observation mine, and I guess an interest of mine, in future CDBG planning stages and approval stages, that may also need to include additional commitments by the city for things like homeless shelters, that we know we all want to do more about, but certainly in today's program, a lot of worthwhile things, and not the least of which is the Step Up Program funding, which is our summer employment program that deserves our full support, if not additional support. So, with that, we have a motion and a second on the amendments. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
As amended.
As amended.
Second, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-one is adopted, is amended, seven to zero. Item number thirty-two, resolution attached, Blackstone Mixed Use Tax Financing Ruin Project Plan, contemplating the development of two sites to include the demolition of the structure at thirty-eight, twenty-four, Farnham Street, and the construction of a four-to-five-story mixed-use structure and associated commercial space, and the demolition of the structure at four oh one, South Forty-first Street, and the construction of a four-to-five-story multifamily structure. Majority of required parking will be provided onsite underneath the structures. Approved.
Public carrying on number thirty-two is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is the Blackstone Mixed Use TIF Ruin and project plan, and this map shows the blue, kind of pink highlighted areas are the two properties that are a part of this particular TIF project. They're about maybe four blocks away. This is at the thirty-eighth and Farnham location, this is at basically Forty-first and Harney. What's here right now is a former gas station that's now a service station, basically reduced to a service station, very underutilized site. This is a former residence that was built in the early nineteen hundreds that was converted to multiple uses of, or rather, multiple apartments within the residential structure, and it's typically hard to go back and convert those into a single-family home again, so it really has passed its useful, usefulness. So, this particular project will allow these two properties to be redeveloped. At thirty-eighth and Farnham, it will be a mixed-use project with fifty-one apartments, mix of one, two, and, excuse me, studios, ones and twos. There will be actually two buildings, a building that fronts Farnham Street that will be two stories with four thousand square feet of commercial, and then the building behind it will be a five-story building with garage parking underneath. At the Forty-first and Harney site, that will be solely residential, thirty-nine apartment units with parking underneath. Here are a couple of renderings, at least elevations, rather. This is the north elevation of the Forty-first and Harney site, which would be the thirty, thirty-nine apartment units, west elevation, and these are basically looking the same, south elevation and an east elevation. And then for the thirty-eighth and Farnham site, right here, we have the south elevation. South elevation basically is you standing on Farnham Street, looking directly at the building, the north elevation, and then east and west elevation. One thing I want to share real quick, before I yield the floor to the developers who are here to answer any additional questions, you have heard me come before you with various projects in the Blackstone District. I just wanted to show you a map that kind of outlines where those projects have been. So, today, this project and this, this site, rather, and that site are the two before you today, but what has come before you in the past is this project, which was the very first one in the Blackstone Business District, which was called Fortieth and Farnham. The next project was Thirty-ninth and Farnham, and then the last project was this one called Forty, Harney-Farnham, and they're all involving commercial, and a few of them have residential. These two that are before you have residential, this project has residential on Harney Street, this project had about seven apartment units. In total, to date, and that is including this project that is before you, should it be approved, would represent about two-point-one million in TIF that would be allocated to the improvement in this business district. It would also involve equal about nineteen million, a little over nineteen million, almost twenty million in total investment into this particular area. It represents about, the TIF total represents about fourteen percent, a little over fourteen percent of the total project cost that has been invested in this particular area, and I believe with that, I would just ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Hi, Matt Dwyer, thirty-nine, thirty, Farnham. Jaylon. Happy to answer any questions or any comments or anything like that.
Great, thanks, Matt.
Sure.
And Jay. Public carions closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes.
Did I ask for opponents yet? I don't think I asked for opponents. Are there any opponents in the, in the audience? See, none public carions closed. Mr. Jerem.
And I would say, when Bridget talks about the nearly twenty million, that's in TIF-involved projects, the investment in the area, there are a number of businesses throughout the district that have reinvested without the use of TIF, which I believe would put the project into the, over twenty million. There's more coming just to the east, in between Harney and Farnham that I'm aware of, which will, will put this even higher, but in terms of jobs, I forget where the count is on the ticker, but I know it's a number that's going upward, and I thought at one point we had eclipsed the hundred job mark. You two and your investors are to be commended on your investment, both out of your own pockets and with your partners, to make these projects, and so often, we talk about dollars of the reinvestment in buildings and things, but in terms of people who are looking for work, who have full-time jobs because of these projects, I think is important to underscore, and Matt, do you want to take a minute to just talk about that?
Yeah, I think a hundred is the number that we use. I mean, it could vary a few in either direction, but a hundred's a good number, I think. I mean, it's thirteen new businesses that have opened in the last twelve months.
And there'll be more commercial space.
On that street, we'll have some commercial space associated with this project. You know, we certainly don't expect to hang up our, hang up our spurs just yet, you know, we'd like to keep going for a few more years, so, we'd anticipate that there would be even more projects down the, down the road in the district there. So, yeah, we're pretty excited about how it's going, and certainly appreciate the city and the council's support of us thus far.
The other thing I want to point out is the additional contribution to covering the cost of the two-way conversion project that you two have stepped up in a big way to do throughout your projects, but again, here, it was only anticipated your thirty-eighth and Farnham project might reimburse fifteen thousand, it's, I think, going to be over seventeen or eighteen, and then the Forty-first and Harney will actually also be kicking in money, which wasn't foreseen, so somewhere along the line, you ought to get your calculators about and see where you are on that, because as, as we work to address that.
Eighty-two thousand dollars, Chris.
Okay, I guess it's good to know you do have your calculator out, but thank you on behalf of the city for your contribution for that, the jobs you created and to be created, and the business tenants that you brought in to do that, so.
Yeah.
It's a good story all around, and if you want to add any other plugs for yourself, I know you guys are kind of on the down humble level, but.
Yeah, so, you know, I think the businesses speak for themselves, and I think that the two-way was incredibly important, so I'm glad that the TIF dollars were able to be used to support that, and it was money well spent, in our opinion, and we're happy to, happy to be able to kind of do what we're doing. TIF's a huge part of that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, this is just more of commentary, but first of all, thanks to Bridget and her department for being, spearheading a lot of these changes. I was speaking to a professor from Wayne State, the Wayne, the National Wayne State that's in Detroit University, and they were commenting to me a week ago about how they're really impressed with Omaha's urban infill program, and quite frankly, they were pretty jealous, saying they wish that some of the things that we're doing here, that they had thought about that a little earlier in Detroit, so I just thought, just thought you'd like to know that our name and what we're trying to do, it's getting out there, so, just wanted to report that.
Thank you. Mr. Garnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm certainly glad that both of you are not going to hang up your spurs, and that you are looking at things down the road, so, speaking of down the road.
We've, we've visited.
Thank you.
Councilman Garnett, we've gone down for a few.
Councilman Garnett, we've gone down for a few happy hours down there, so we're, we're well aware of what happens south of Farnum, so we're gonna keep, keep looking for.
Thank you, Bob.
North too.
North of Farnum as well, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Jarom, since you're late with what's going on there, have you tried the night owl?
Yes, I have, for lunch.
Okay, I just, you know, it's a good place. I figured if you wouldn't, or hadn't, Councilwoman Milton would.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. And congratulations, guys, it's great to see the success you're having there in the area. Is there a motion?
There you go. Motion approved.
Thanks, guys. Thanks to Bridget, too, by the way. Thanks.
Jarom.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
President's seat, Councilor seventy, the public hearing, agenda items thirty-three through seventy-seven shall be held on third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item thirty-eight, ordinance to amend Chapter forty-four electrical code to clarify the types of electrical wiring methods allowed within city jurisdiction for residential buildings.
Public hearing on number thirty-eight is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Davis.
I don't think I'm getting old. Jay Davis, Assistant Planning Director. This is just some language to clean up something that got missed during an amendment change back in September, October. It was a wiring method we didn't want to take out of the code, but ended up coming out inadvertently. This puts it back in force and sets us to a better standard of what the code said at that time.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Just a second. Public hearing. President, City Council, seventy, the public hearing, agenda items, agenda item number thirty-nine through forty shall be held on third reading. President, City Council, seventy, the public hearing, agenda item forty-one through forty-six shall be held on the second reading on the supplement. President, City Council, seventy, the public hearing on agenda item forty-eight shall be held on the second reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Jarom.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Three thirteen, we are adjourned.